Welcome, everybody, tonight to our Select Board meeting for December 13th. The agenda is as follows. We'll have a public comment period. Minutes, warrants, mail, town administrators' report, personal recognition of Darcy Pruden, RFQ issued for engineering firm to complete the grant package and execute Phase Two of the land fill site, hazard mitigation plan proposal, request expenditure, allocation and plans for the Emerald Tree borer insects, approval of grant for Center Street Park, adopt traffic ordinance, discuss hydro dam railroad damage, set 2019 transfer station fees, appointment of John Bashir to the Economic Development Committee, consideration of the town and panel employees' workers' comp practices policy, approval of town health and safety policy, consideration of town and panel public record inspection, copying and transmission policy, consideration for the town and panel transitional return to work program, ballot article for Gravo property, and the first review of our 19 and 20 budget. Any new business or old business? Can we put on there?
I think we had, on old business, didn't we have a discussion of a lawyer's ruling? That's probably appropriate for an executive session, but we need to get it on there somewhere.
Okay.
What was it? Lawyer's ruling, under old?
I think it's under old business.
Okay. Any other additions? I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's okay. Public comment. Go ahead, you want to go?
Go ahead, noodle first, go.
All right. I ask, before you speak, if you introduce yourself.
Absolutely. I'll stand down here so I can get on camera.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Mike Slattery, I live in North Ponnell, I'm chairman of the Planning Commission. I'm here tonight to thank this board for its resolution to apply for municipal planning grant. I'm also here to thank Michael Walker for the great job he did in putting that together. My understanding is that the grant has been awarded, which is very good news. This grant will be used to hire consultant by the Planning Commission, or by the town for the Planning Commission, to update our bylaws, which have not been updated since 2011, believe it or not, except for maybe some minor dust-ups in there. The process is, Michael, I think that requests for qualifications will go out, we have to go to a couple of different vendors, including the BCRC, and then we get to make the decision based on several criteria. It's essential that we update those bylaws as soon as possible, because now that we have a brand spanking new town plan, the town plan and the bylaws are not in conjunction with each other anymore. So, it's time to modernize those bylaws as well. So, thank you to the board, and thank you to Michael for a great job.
Thank you for the kind work.
Yeah. Sorry, Tom.
Thanks.
Anybody else for public comment?
I'll stand up, I guess.
Okay.
You have to go.
That's all right.
Could you introduce yourself, so everybody knows who you are?
I'm John Bashir, Ponnell resident here. And I just want to say thank you to the board and stuff, too, for their great work. I think, from what I've been watching, everything's been going pretty good. I only have one little issue that I disagreed with a little bit, but I'm glad it did get resolved, so I just want to make a quick comment to it, but I don't want to waste any time on it, other than a few seconds on it here. But when, I just wanted to say, when Sue got elected to the board, there was other interested parties, and I didn't see that with the board that was even asking about it.
Correction, I wasn't elected, I was appointed.
Appointed to it, excuse me. But when you were appointed to it, there wasn't any other discussion on if anybody else was available for the board, or even interested in it, and that was my only concern, that that didn't get happen. And before, when a seat came up, there was discussion on it. And that was, is a concern to me, and I think it was a concern from people I've talked to around town, that that didn't happen this time. And, again, I was interested in the board, too, so, or still am. I'm glad we got the seat filled, and nothing against that, just that if it's, if a seat comes up, I think that should be put out to the town like it has been in the past, and just put out there to see if any interest in there, before it's jumped on that soon. I just think that would, you know, should be known. There is a lot of upset people over that, from what I'm told from people that I've talked to, and a lot of other residents of town that weren't quite happy with that happening. And I just want to let that be known there, that something to think about for the future, for the board.
Does anybody else want to? I'll respond, does anybody else want to talk about it?
Oh.
You have a different subject, or no?
No, it's the same subject.
Okay. Is anybody else want to speak about it, or I can speak about it? Anybody?
Should I voice my, or, no, then we can maybe address them all, or no?
Well, I just didn't, I didn't know if there was a board member that wanted to reply before.
I would like to.
Okay.
I did read the regulations on it, I hadn't read them at the time, because no one had visibility that this was going to happen, and it's actually covered by two different regulations, that's 24 VSA 961 and 963. 961 says you have to post it immediately, and 963 says you can't lollygag, I'm paraphrasing, obviously. You can't lollygag, you've got to, you've got to fill the position as quickly as possible. I believe, and nothing is used, do I?
Okay, it's fine, I'm fine.
I believe the two are supposed to work in unison, not contradicting each other. It is, post it as quickly as possible, find out who's interested, then do your appointment, is how I interpret it. So, I tend to agree with you, that I think we really ought to have found out what the interest was first, even if it's just putting it off for one more meeting. Unfortunately, we're at a disadvantage there also, in that we had previously voted to have less frequent meetings, which pushed the next meeting out to last week. So, I mean, I'm in agreement that we really ought to consider that going forward, and really look at the spirit of those laws. They're not contradicting each other, and they, even though they were said to be contradicting each other, they ought to be working in unison. We ought to be finding out who's interested, and then selecting from those that are interested.
I'd like to just say, I've been here for four vacancies, and every one, we done different. I think we ought to at least establish a plan, that if something happens, somebody leaves the board, or somebody dies, or something, we go through a standard procedure. I don't care if it takes an extra week, or whatever, but we should have something standard, not, well, we're going to appoint this at right at that moment, or we're going to wait three weeks, or. The first guy that I was here for, the poor man died, and I don't even think anybody missed him for months. That's too bad. You know, I don't think that was correct, doing that. And then, and they said, well, it's too close to election, we're not going to bother. But then, and I know that the law, we followed the law, as far as the law went, in order to, you can appoint, which that was what was done. But I think we ought to have a standard procedure, so that we don't have to have this discussion every time somebody leaves the board. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Like, you know, I think that, historically, looking back, like Ronnie said, every time we've had this, we've done it different way. My understanding this time was, we had read the law, we were familiar with it, if the appointment was made in the best interest of the town. You know, and I'll be honest with you, it was discussed previously, because my assumption was Nelson was going to get down as soon as he won his election with the state. So, I had thought that, you know, we should probably be prepared to have someone come into play, I had mentioned that Sue, and that was, that was my way of thinking. I also know that we are approaching our budget differently this year, and we're starting much earlier, and I think it's very important we continue moving along. As Bob said, we're meet twice a month now. You know, I think, again, I think it was definitely made in the best interest of the town. But I appreciate your concern, and you're speaking up. Yes?
Jenny Dewar, former board member, I'm the one who resigned, and I did make a recommendation for Sue to step in purely for the best interest of the town, since the next election is only two months out, and you're starting budget right away, as Jason said. And you can't, I don't think you can have one standard set of rules, when you have very different criteria leading up to those rules. If you have someone stepping down for a two-year remainder of term, that's a whole different thing, but for two months, it makes no sense to hold off and bring in, like, then you'd have to have this conversation today about appointing, and you're going to start your budget talks today, and you would be short of board member. And that's why the board decided to do it, in my understanding, as being an audience member, sitting and watching it happen. Bob was not here for it, but everyone had the law in front of them, and had been here, he would have seen that law clearly written out.
Just as clarification, I did pull it up on my computer and had it in front of me once I was told what they were. So...
Mr. Chair? If I may?
Yes.
When I spoke to the attorney to go through this, what made the distinction was the word "forthwith," meaning "right away." And that's, so, you can read something, you can interpret it, but when the attorney said "right away," and then he said, "but it also says this." So, you weren't wrong, but you were, you know, you chose that path. I just wanted to make that distinction of that.
Okay. Okay. Yes?
Jody Morrison, I'm a lister here in the lovely town of Ponnell.
Can you come forward, please?
I'm not here to lay blame on anybody, or to question the board's authority, I'm here to voice my concern on how differently the two appointments went. I did everything according, you know, if, the way I was supposed to do it. And the lister's office was without a lister for over a month while I waited for the next meeting. I like, you know, listen, I don't have anything to do with Sue, if it was anybody else, I'd be saying the same darn thing, and anybody who knows me...
Not taking any of it personally.
I treat, you know, well, listen, what's right is, that's why I'm saying, that's what Ronnie said, you know what, you've done it different every time. If there's policies or guidelines, which is what I was told, which is what was on the meeting, August 3rd, I think it was. But, listen, if you follow the same thing every time, that's my problem, that, you know, I waited over a month, the lister's office was short over a month, well over a month. You know, and I just think it stinks, that that's, you know, that you can not pick and choose, but decide what's more important, and, you know, who you can appoint immediately, who you can't, and that's my point. My point is, there should be guidelines, there should be something, not just for an appointed lister, or an appointed select board member, or whomever. It should be done the same darn way, every single time, posted, you know?
Right. I don't know how the law works, as far as the lister goes, I know, with the select board, it was, we had the law right in front of us on the piece of paper.
Right, right, but if you look back to the meeting, where I was voted in, and then Rose Marie voiced concerns about it not being on the up and up, and that we should list it, or on the website, and posted.
I remember that, I remember.
Right, so then they rescinded it, and I waited. And that is my problem here, is that, you know what, it seems as though that some rules apply, for some citizens, and some, for others.
I understand.
And anybody who knows me knows that no flagging. That's why I was really hesitant to take. But, thank you for your time, but I just had to say, it's funny, and if you could explain to me why it was different, or if you have an explanation why, you know, what makes it different, why Sue could be appointed like immediately?
My thought was, because we had the law in front of us, it said "forthwith," which means, the way I understood it, was immediately. If we had waited and done run an election, we would have been, we've been, by the time we would have had the election, and a new person in there, there would have been less than a month left of the term.
Right, and I understand that, but what I'm saying is, still, there are guidelines, and there are things set, so that we don't run into this stuff, that people don't think that you're not doing stuff above board, or people think that you're, you know what I mean, that's all I'm saying, is that it's, it was, it's just frustrating, so frustrating.
And I don't think the issue was election, it was whether or not you could wait one meeting, or even call a special meeting, to appoint, and know who isn't.
I'm just questioning how it was different for Sue than it was for me to be appointed.
Right, 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 okay. Okay. So, if I may, what would have happened at that next meeting?
We would have known who was interested in the, in the position.
And then, what's the process? You're still going to appoint, right? So, then you would, you'd have to nominate, or you'd have to nominate, or you'd have to nominate, and then it would go around for a while. That could be kind of a long, drawn-out process, too, right? Or no one winds up interested in it.
Right, or somebody writes a letter of interest, like I did.
If I could chime in, what we're hanging our hat on is 24 VSA 963, and that's the one that says "forthwith." The other one is 961, that says, "you must post it."
I read them.
So, now, in order to go, in order to comply with both of those, we appoint, and we post for no reason at all, except to be in compliance. I don't think that was the intent.
Right.
The spirit of that was to make sure that we posted it, we let the town know there was a vacant.
Do what Ronnie suggested, develop a policy. Just have it in your rule, just a procedure.
That's right. That's probably the right way to go.
Again, I think, again, I think it was made in the best interest of the town, it wasn't for anybody's personal gain.
Right.
And I didn't say so either, I just said it was wrong, that, you know, well, there was...
And I agree, I agree, we ought to, we ought to come up with a policy. I'll work on that. Please. Anybody else for public comment tonight?
Thank you, Sue, for stepping in, I really appreciate your service.
You're welcome.
As do I, Sue, and I don't, you know me, I didn't mean anything by what you're right and is right.
I've had many, many people come to me and say they were happy I was back on the board, and it makes me feel really good that people have come to me.
Right, but I didn't know if the rules were different, because you're appointed, and I'm appointed, but I'd had, you know...
The first time I ran for office, RJ Jolly had resigned, John and I were both interested. The board decided not to appoint, and John and I ran for election. And I won the race, and he and John lost the race.
And I understand that.
But we had two years, but there was two years left on that select board's term.
Right, and I understand, and I'm not questioning any of that.
No, I'm just explaining...
It's just, you know, the procedure should be the same every darn time, so that every time something happens, we're not doing this. So, everybody's like, okay, this is how it goes, we post, this is what happens.
I'd like to reiterate one thing. One week does not make a difference in the town of Ponnell. So, if that was, you know, and how long did it take?
Listen, I'm not talking about a week, I'm talking about a month, you're talking about...
I'm talking about a week. All we had to do was post that. Post it for a week, the following meeting, if we had some candidates, it's just like people put in for the planning board, put in for all these other boards, that they are appointed people. They don't run for anything, they're appointed people, their names come up. Then, as a board, we say, well, who are you going to take? Sometimes, we're not, we don't, we don't only get one person, that's who we nominate.
And I understand that, Ronnie.
And I understand, we got to have the seat filled.
But I'm not questioning that, you're, I'm questioning why I was, why when it came up to the board to appoint me, and then Rose Marie had questioned it, we waited a month, over a month. That's all I'm saying, is what you do for one, to appoint one person, you should do to appoint them all, so you don't run into this every time. Because, I mean, it's just that simple.
I think that's just what I reiterated.
Very good. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to come up with a policy, and try to make it so it sees everybody, and...
So, it's fair for everybody, so it's right, so it's the same thing every time.
Okay. Anybody else? We're good on public comment? All right. Approval of minutes from 11-8.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
I have to abstain.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approval of minutes for 12-6.
So moved.
Were you here?
I missed that meeting.
Oh, okay, I'll second, I was here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Bob, Bob, soon to stand. Okay. Warrants, bear with me here. Oh, this will be fun. Well, I'll read all of them, and then we'll, we'll vote on all of them, does that work for everybody?
It works for me.
Put your hand up if you want to dispute one, otherwise, vote on all of them. First one here is for ending 11-16, this is for payroll, and the amount of 89, 83, and 84 cents.
There's some that I can't vote on, though, Jason.
Okay. So...
Ah, that's a good point.
So, you could agree to vote on the ones that you signed?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Or just abstain from them all, or...
Yeah, if we're going to do them all, you can just abstain if you want.
All right.
Next one is for...
I don't think they're going to get rejected.
Next one is, period, payroll ending 11-21, and the amount of 10,186.01. This one here is payroll ending 11-30, and the amount of 94.16.3 cents. Payroll ending 12-7, and the amount of 99.17.64 cents. Payroll ending 12-14, and the amount of 97.78.13 cents. This is going to be for accounts payable, ending 11-16, and the amount of 3,970,832.67 cents, with the large numbers being payments to Monte Anthony High School, Ponnell Elementary School, and the Town of Ponnell Road Department, the three large ones in that. This is accounts payable, and the amount of 15,978.95, with the large ones being Blue Cross Blue Shield, Housick Water Quality District, which I believe is for wastewater, and $3,600 for auditors, town audit. There's two on this one here. And the second one here is, and the amount of 19,937, and the large ones there being Blue Cross Blue Shield, and IRS. This one here is going to be accounts payable, and the amount of 24,764.64 cents, with the large ones being Evaku Water Technologies, Green Mountain Power, John Ray &amp; Sons for Fuel, Morton Salt for road salt, Robert Green for oil, and Veemers, which I believe is our retirement for our employees, and IRS. This one here also is accounts payable, and the amount of 26,038.87, with the large ones being Morton Salt for 6,000 for roads. $3,400 for town audit, Stan Tech, which I believe is laboratory testing for wastewater, This one here for accounts payable, and the total amount of 17,952.11 cents, with the large ones being Bennington County Sheriff's for 4,300, John Ray &amp; Sons for Fuel, Fisher &amp; Fisher, which would be legal, that'd be our attorneys. And that was for 4,000, IRS for 2,800. And the last one, and the amount of 3,813.43, this is for Green Mountain Power and Housick River Hydro LLC, with the large one being Housick River Hydro LLC for 2,500. Those will be our warrants, and I'll take a motion to approve. I'm motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Extentions?
I abstain.
Mail.
Sir, first piece of mail is from our auditors, and they need a signature from the chair. This is our audit engagement letter, meaning that we have engaged them from the 2018 audit, you'd be signing on the back page.
This is the same auditor we always use?
To my knowledge, I was told it's a different auditor than we had originally used, but I haven't been here that long, I don't know.
I've been here some for the last...
It's the same lawyer, that's the same...
Same auditor, but we're on the same contract.
Yeah, same contract, yeah, it's the same contract. It's finishing up the 2017, he's almost done with the 2018. And then, the second piece of mail is a request for your signature, supporting Catamount Access Television Cable Act, preservation alliance. In a nutshell, cable, TV, yes, money, some of that money's filtered through to Catamount TV, public access TV, the law's proposed to change, which means that collapse of these folks, because the money doesn't need to pass through to them anymore, they would have to be funded some other way, or collapse. All of our elected officials have signed letters, and they have requested that you folks sign a letter in support of not passing this piece of legislation, and that would be up to you, Mr. Chair, if you want to get a vote on that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on it?
Are we voting on that tonight? Or are we going to read it and decide what it is?
Yes, it's, it's...
Time-sensitive.
Time-sensitive, yeah.
So, I think I'm going to take a motion to, to sign, if someone wants to...
Could I...
Yeah, can you explain it one more time?
Yeah, I'm a little lost myself.
Am I getting it right? Did I get this right? Do you know what, what was that? Did you, did I get that right?
Oh, sorry, I was focusing on that.
Okay. What, from what I gather, cable money is regulated, it goes through cable TV, some of that money goes out to public, public TV, like Catamount. They, they come here and they, they film us, and they do other things. If this bill passes, that won't be the case anymore, and cable TV networks are just going to keep that money, they're out of a funding source, they're done.
That's pretty accurate, yeah, and there's, they're, they could either keep a portion of it, or all of it.
Right.
There's evidence, well, we believe that they might try to keep all of it by writing it off as an expense.
So, if this bill passes, we can no longer have Cat TV coming?
Potentially.
The funding should stop entirely, or a portion of it could stop.
All right, but by signing this, we're doing...
You're just voicing your opinion that it should not pass.
We're against it, okay.
Yeah, we're against it.
And as it is right now, so everybody understands, we don't pay for the service right now.
Correct.
No.
So, well, what that, so, yes and no. A portion of the, there's a, there's a line on every cable bill through Comcast, or through whoever provides that cable. In Vermont, it's mostly Comcast. There's a small fee that is added, it's called the PEG fee, P-E-G. That fee is charged on the bill to, to support nationwide, places like Cat TV, or organizations like Cat TV.
Public, okay.
Yep. And the bill, or the bill could allow Comcast to keep that money, and still call it PEG money. They would, it would still look like it's to support stations like Cat TV, but they could keep it for themselves. Yeah.
Your pleasure, sir.
All right.
Take a motion.
I'm okay with you signing.
What's that?
I'm okay with you signing.
Okay.
You need a motion?
I think we need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to sign.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Somebody'll second it.
Aye. Opposed? Anybody opposed?
For the sake of expediency.
Is there, oh, I checked it, right here.
Okay, I'm just going to start reading. And, Mr. Chair?
And, Mr. Chair, I have email from Mr. Sid Smithers. Michael, I understand full well that you have a very full plate, but please remind the selectmen that a terrific town resource is going underused without a full-time librarian. Can't find a librarian, we should encourage the board of library trustees to man a desk at some part-time basis. Signed, Mr. Smithers. There has been submitted a ballot article for $15,000 for a part-time librarian, so that's underway.
It hasn't been received yet, but they're...
Yeah, the intent, they've asked.
So are you encouraging somebody, Mr. Smithers, to come forward to the librarian now?
I just think we ought to have somebody down there.
There's nobody down there now, Linda retired or something?
Correct.
Next is a letter from Rosemarie Pelletier. Having served on the Ponell Planning Commission, I am aware of the importance of zoning bylaws, interested in filling the remainder of Shannon Barasadi's term. And, Mr. Chair, if we may, I have a Mr. Bushy recommendation during the regular course of my report. Would you like this appointment and his appointment to get a vote at that point?
Sure.
Because he wants that seat too, so...
Oh, okay, I got you. Good. Too interesting, all right.
Yeah. This is from Ms. Dawn Rodriguez. I'm ready to express my support for the board's appointment of Suzanne Karaman to fill the remainder of Mr. Doer's term. I was disappointed to read in the banner, there was an immediate objection to the appointment. We need to move past unnecessary disagreements towards positive accomplishments. Karaman is an ideal person to complete Doer's one-year term, she's indicated in her interview with the banner that she wants no part of controversies in our town. Moreover, Karaman's experience as a select board member will allow her to help the board agenda move forward without delay, and signed by Dawn. And Mr. Chapman wrote, requesting a town meeting to elect a new board member to fill the seat left by Ms. Doer. This is from Mr. Mark Smith. Phil, the Ponell Select Board may have put the cart before the horse in appointing Suzanne Karaman to the Select Board before soliciting for candidates. It's looked as if a plan was already in place before Jenny Doer's resignation was announced. Especially since Jason Olansky announced he had already spoken to Susan Karaman, looks like shady politics. From Mr. Joe Bump, with the current climate of events in Select Board, I do not feel that it would be in your best interest to rush ahead and appoint someone for the vacancy. I'm quite sure that you can see how deceptive the appointment looks to the townspeople. Never mind that Ms. Karaman was named in the resignation of Ms. Doer. If you wish to regain any small measure of respect from the town and continue to operate with proper transparency, I suggest you reevaluate this appointment. To have an article published in the paper was foolish on the board's part. This shows the town that you're operating under your own agenda, not following proper political protocol. You should always remember that you are representatives of the town, voted in office by people, for the people. Be not drawn, do not be drawn in the Jenny Doer's game of sabotage. I appreciate the work you do for the most part, though I do believe you have done some backdoor politics. Appointment of the town manager being at the top of the list, please consider your position. This news debacle, and let's move things forward, Mr. Joe Bump. This is from Ms. Melissa Collins, to who it may concern. I was just informed there was a vacancy posted for the remaining term of the former Select Board member, yet I saw in the paper an appointment had already been made. How is that possible when the people of Ponell had not had a chance to weigh in? I know there are several people interested in this position. I, for one, vote for a special meeting to have someone elected by the townspeople, not appointed because said former Select Board member requested so in her resignation letter, nor by the vote of another Select Board member whose campaign was run by Suzanne Karaman. There seems to be a conflict of interest. Thank you. And that was Ms. Melissa Collins. That's it for those letters. We do have zoning administrators log. He did 10 verifications, permit for a shed, permit for outside addition of business, and a permit applied for that was not actually needed. We have the Bennington County Sheriff's Office report. He responded to three hangups, 911, six agency assists, two public assists, he had one burglary, two suspicious events, two accidents that were property damage only, two agency assists with fire rescue, two motor vehicle complaints, six vehicle identification number verifications, five directed patrols all over town, 35 traffic stops, and it's detailed here, should you want to take a look at that at some point. Notice here from, according to Vermont State Statute, vehicles left in public right of way that interfere with snow plowing operations may be towed without warning. In addition, according to the S.A. Section 1126, it's illegal to plow snow from a private property on or across public highways. Their cooperation with the Highway Department, crew members during winter storm conditions would be greatly appreciated. For any questions of enforcement of these statutes, please call 442-2056. And that came from our Highway Department. And we have Bennington County Regional Report, should you want to read it, the highlight of which sets dues at $7,000. And it's available for you to read. And, Mr. Chairman, that does it for the mail.
Question on the dues is that that's not the SWIP, the SWIP plan for the transfer station, is it?
No, that's the yearly dues.
Okay, that's yearly, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If this is inappropriate, don't worry about it. Since these aren't numbered, can you change the order of how you take these?
I could, yeah. Normally, we do that at the beginning of the meeting, but I'd be glad to do it for you.
We're older, and we have to get home early.
I got it, I understand.
But I'm particularly interested in the approval of the grant for the Center Street Park. And maybe that could fit right, dovetail right with his, he just finished his...
Okay, so now he would do his town administrator's report?
And it's in there.
Then we could follow that.
Okay, so that can be part of it.
Yes.
All right, sure.
The first item I have, very pleased to tell you that our wastewater plant supervisor has gone through her proficiency testing, chemical testing for wastewater plant, and she received a award of excellence. She'd be really proud of her, she does a magnificent job down there.
Congratulations, Dorsey.
Very proud of you. We have a request for qualifications. This is part of the entire process of having a Phase Two completed on the West landfill site. We've been mandated by the state to mitigate that, and as part of the revolving loan fund, we have to get an engineer onboard, and the engineer goes through and helps fill out the loan process. So I would ask that we, I would like to send that out.
Could we get a little explanation on that? I think there's some people that aren't up to speed on that, what's happened and what we found with the whole problem.
There was a solar company that wanted to place panels on the West landfill. If you're driving into the landfill and you look to your left, there's area covered up. And we, to do that, we have to do what's called a Phase One evaluation, we have to walk the site and see if it's suitable. That evaluation revealed that that was not covered properly, that entire part of the landfill was not covered properly. There was actually debris sticking out of the face of the field that we walked, which meant that hazardous waste from the state, so we had to do a Phase Two. Phase Two is a more in-depth engineering study, including placing wells to check groundwater. That's $53,000. Further, the state mandated that we remediate that entire site, which could put us in the millions of dollars. So I'm working towards a revolving loan fund from the state, which requires that I start with hiring an engineer to evaluate the Phase Two, and begin, make recommendations for who will do the Phase Two, and that we literally hold that $53 for up to five years, until we get a price on remediation, and we fold that $53 into the loan. This is the long game here, this is gonna be a pain. So I just started it.
So we did find, and I think it's important that we know, that we did try some other avenues in the beginning, but we found that because we were the, there was a reason why we were denied originally.
Correct.
Because we failed to cover it properly, is that the reason?
Yes, the town failed to cover it properly, this was back in the 80s.
80s, okay.
So nobody here is culpable, but as it turned, I went for brownfield money, but was denied because it's the town's fault.
Yeah, one of us is to blame.
That guy, okay. So it was blatantly obvious that it wasn't covered properly, because when we did the walk, there was debris sticking out of the ground all over the place, so unless I could find another way to get this done, I have to move forward with it. It's gonna take a while.
Okay. So we'll continue to see that on our whole business each meeting?
Next order of business, we're gonna begin hazardous mitigation plan, and what I would like to do is, I'm gonna start putting the board together. I want to hit it hard, get it done without, I want to make sure that it's done, take maybe a month or two to get it done. Be myself, representative of Bennington County Regional Commission, the town emergency manager, I'd like one Select Board member to step up and volunteer, DRB member, I'd like to get a couple of citizens. The highway foreman is critical in this for hazard mitigation plan, another town employee, and a sheriff deputy. And hazardous mitigation plan is where we evaluate the town, where the major hazards are from either man-made or natural disasters, and how we mitigate those. It's very important for us, for acquiring FEMA funds should we have a disaster, and it's also helpful if we want to apply for FEMA grants. They look very heavily into that. We'll be doing that in the future.
Which, the fire departments primarily are the ones that are looking for that?
I would like to request I be, an expenditure of $90 for me to attend a workshop in Montpelier. I would be going February 7th, and the seminar is to learn about town meeting. And I've never been to one of your town meetings, and I thought it was a very appropriate thing for me to do.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You're going to see, when you look at the budget, an additional $2,000 in the highway. We have the ash borer insects, devastating ash trees. Next year, we plan to hire a company to come out, evaluate with Highway Department what are placing buildings, people, or roadways in danger, and they'll cut those trees down, and the Highway Department will be disposing of the trees. You've heard about that, you've had BRCRC come in and speak on it. So we executed the plan, and that's it.
Michael, quick question?
Yes.
Going back to the hazardous mitigation plan proposal, were you gonna propose that we do a committee? Was that something? Well, you gave...
Yeah, I would like to go out, I'd like to start talking to folks and start forming a committee, and if you'd like to be on it, we'd be all to have you.
Well, no, no, well, and maybe I do, I'm not sure. But I would just, I just want to make, I didn't know if you were gonna propose it or not, because you laid it out pretty nicely here.
Oh, thank you, but, yeah, no need to read the entire thing. And it doesn't require a motion, it's part of what, I just want to make sure you know what we're doing.
Okay, okay.
The next is approval for grant for Center Street Park, and I would like to also request, and this would require a vote, that the town waive the zoning permit fee to execute that.
Can I ask a question on grants? I haven't seen in the past where we had to approve, this board had to approve grants before they're sent in. Is that a change? Is that something new?
No, but what happens is, a lot of times, before a grant is applied for, we have to write a letter of support. That, I believe, we vote on.
Right, and, yeah, yes.
So we wrote a letter of support for this particular grant?
Correct. Anyway, so I'd like permission to submit that, it's due tomorrow.
And make a motion to waive the fees?
Well, certainly if we move forward with it, but I would like to ask some questions about it, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
But don't we need a motion, a second, and then discussion?
Well, I agree, I think we should vote on the waiving the fees if it's approved.
Right.
Correct.
And then we can discuss the rest of it.
Right.
So, okay, I'll second on the waiving of the fees, and then we go to discussion.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so just a couple of questions, I just want to make sure that we're clear on it. One thing about the grant for the Center Street is, one, is the pavilion redundant to what we already have at the American Legion? I know I talked about that a little bit last night in the economic...
No, the Legion's a privately-owned entity, and for the purpose of this, we don't want something on Route 7, we're looking at a place to hold fairs. They have a pavilion with picnic benches and so forth, but this is open-air, like to have concerts, bands, that type of thing, it'd be more open.
Right, but it still seems, it still seems like the same setup, right? It's not actually on Route 7, it's...
You have a berm with trees off to the side over here. Pavilion would be facing towards the, would be the southeast.
I just want to understand why it's not redundancy, that's all.
I don't think it's redundancy, because it's a town-owned, it's a own, Legion is owned by the Legion.
Right, I don't think it's redundant, because the town doesn't own the Legion Pavilion.
Well, I understand we don't own it, but then, but if I understood from Jim yesterday last night, the Legion doesn't charge for the use, so if you want to use it, you just...
I hadn't heard that, I thought it was like a $300 fee to use the hall.
Or maybe I heard that wrong, I could be wrong about that.
I thought there was a charge for it.
And then, quite frankly, we're looking to create something to kick off economic development, gather people together in town, get a sense of the town, town center type of atmosphere, where people can come and recreate.
I saw the pictures, it looks pretty good, and it looks pretty nice.
And that's the idea on the plan.
But does that also change the priority for the location of the town office?
No, not at all. In fact, it's synergistic, it'll work perfectly with the town hall. The town hall...
That's not what I mean.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
What I'm talking about is, it is perfect if the new town office is here. If we go with a renovated property, like the Roost or something along those lines, which we're also considering, doesn't this sort of shift us or give us incentives in one direction versus another direction that might save the towns some money?
Not at all, it's a perfect fit. You have a town hall right next to the park, you can utilize the parking on weekends of the town hall.
You're missing my point, I think.
Maybe.
We are considering multiple options for a new town hall. Some of those are renovated properties that are not located on Center Street. Some of those are new construction of either, you know, of various degrees on Center Street. Does this park, putting it here, pretty much change the incentives for where we move to go, to go for a town hall?
No.
It seems that it would, it seems that it would make this a more desirable property for the town hall than some of the renovated properties. Now, what happens if we go with something else that's not located on Center Street for a town hall? Then this becomes less attractive. Is that true?
How would it be less attractive?
How would it be less attractive?
May I? What difference does that make? You're not gonna be conducting town business in the town hall in conjunction with renting out the gazebo down here. The town still owns its property, it's private, it's quiet, it'll have parking, you can have your town hall up there. People are gonna drive down here and participate in whatever we put together down here. I have no clue what you're talking about. Why would they go hand-in-hand? Why would you need it on like the same property? Why would it influence a decision to go to...
Well, that's what I'm asking, is whether or not it would influence it, and it seems to be pretty obvious to me, that one of the things I heard when this was proposed, is that the gazebo is step one, and then we'll be looking to make a playground out of it. So if people have to come in and do anything at the town office, their kids can play at the playground, it seems like a town center is a town hall, is a gazebo, is all of these things. I don't understand how that's out in left field. It might be perfectly reasonable to put it here, but I don't understand how the question is out in left field.
I'm not envisioning people dropping their kids off down there, coming into the town hall and doing business, maybe that's just the way that I think. I don't see a lot of people bringing a lot of kids into doing town hall business. So I'm really confused as to why, you seem to be objecting to it, I know you're just trying to get clarification, Bob.
I'm asking questions about where it's going, and let me put it a different way. I guarantee 20, 30, 40 years ago, people sat around a table like this... I guarantee twenty, thirty, forty years ago, people sat around a table like this, had this same discussion, and decided that a basketball hoop in a tennis court was a really good idea. I, I'm sure that happened. So, and I'm not saying this is a bad idea, I will probably vote for it, it looks very good in the grant application, but I'm just asking the questions...
Because they're not used now, you mean, forty years later, is that what you're saying?
I don't think it was ever used, it's not like it...
I played tennis on them, quite a bit.
Did the town put those there, though?
Yeah, no, they were privately, privately owned.
Yeah, they were privately, yeah, the town never put them...
They allowed the town to, to play tennis.
Right, the town never put those down.
The town put them at the school, but, okay.
I'd like to interject something in there, seeing as we're just traveling around this circle.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, I think, you know, we got all these big plans, and I don't see any groups coming. I just don't, it's just...
Don't see any what?
I don't see a, a group of people coming looking for a spot to have, have an event. And I know that the Legion, if the town wanted to use that property down there, they, they would more, as long as the Legion's in business, they would allow it. There's plenty of parking, there's a place there for people to eat, there's all kinds of things, you know, there's a nice tent there, they gotta get it down there, and I'm saying, why don't we just try that first? Let's use the old common sense method, try an event somewhere, see what you get. If you draw more than flies, well, maybe we'll put it where we need it.
We had an event there last summer.
Where?
At the Legion, town event.
Yeah.
And I think we've also had town events here that Steve put on years ago, I think they were both very well attended. To me, I, I, I agree, I think promoting a central area, something our own...
We've got...
Is a great idea.
Alright, I'm gonna give you another example. We got parks all over the place.
We, we do?
Yes, we got Scrooge Park down there, where the dam is.
Okay.
Okay? That's a nice spot.
Kids can't go and play there. Can they?
Yeah.
Really?
Why can't they?
Why can't they?
We got the, we got the recreation center there in North Pond.
Okay.
That's, all of, all of, all the interest in that has dropped off. They used to play soccer down there, they used to do a lot more ball games, they used to have a lot more events, all that's dropped off. All I'm saying is, if this thing don't cost us nothing, I don't care.
It doesn't cost you nothing.
See?
It's a grant.
So, it ain't gonna cost nothing, we don't have to put nothing in, that's what you're saying.
Just in kind work with the, the highway, and, uh, TAM is gonna do all the disposal for free.
Can I speak?
Do all the disposal of what?
Uh, basketball nets and so forth.
Oh, make up the asphalt.
I think I have a, a little different opinion on it myself. I was one of the ones that was very interested in seeing our town office go at the Legion. The Legion wasn't able to give, to let us have the building. I thought it would be a perfect spot because of the, the pavilion down there and everything, I thought it would be a nice community center, but that's not gonna happen, because they're not gonna give it to us. When Michael suggested the grant for this, I said, why don't we build the town office first? How are you gonna build the town office and have the gazebo there, too? But when he explained to me that it's a grant, and the grant was available now, I guess we have to, I, it makes sense to go with it.
No, I, and, and it might very well, and I looked at, uh, what you put together, Michael, and I thought it was very good, it, and very good in your preliminary work, where you got TAM to pay for a lot of things, you got some donated materials, it really didn't cost the town anything except the grant, um, but I think what you're saying is kinda the same thing I was saying, which I think, Mike, you were telling me that that was out in left field, you just don't understand.
No, no, to move to a different place, I mean, if the Legion was an option, and there's a gazebo there, we probably aren't even having this conversation, right? I mean, with the pavilion there.
But, but that, but that speaks to the co-locating, or the desirability of co-locating a town office with the, with the park. That was my question.
One thing to consider, I think, about the Legion is that it is privately owned, um, I believe you call that privately owned. I don't know what, I think Ronnie brought it up, I don't know what the future of the Legion is, so, you bypass a grant you don't even know you're gonna get yet, the opportunity tomorrow to, to get it, and then, six months from now, the Legion closes, and there's no one there to administer the use of that gazebo, I keep calling it a gazebo, I, forgive me, the pavilion down there. Um, I do like the fact that if you, I've, I've seen groups down there, I think it is pretty close to the road, that town may have some liability there, not that this is ten miles away from the road either, but there seems to be a ditch and, uh, and brush and everything down here...
This is a better location.
That, that we didn't, that you don't have down there. Um, and, uh, what a nice use of a beautiful piece of land, with a, with a gorgeous view down there.
I got one more statement to make, and I'll quit. We, uh, a long time ago, as you can tell, I've been around here a long time, uh, they had a school down there in North Pond, and the guy from the Historical Society of Burlington came, Mount Period, come down, looked it over, said the best built building in the town, okay? What did the town of Pond do?
Tore it down.
Decide you're gonna tear it down. That's the first thing. Why? Because the Lions Club, and I was, I wasn't on the board then, but I knew a lot of the members of the board, and the board says, "Look, we don't care what, we're, we're all in agreement with, with putting anything up, but who's gonna maintain it?" See, they were promising basketball thing down there, they were gonna turn the ball field around, they even said, "Well, put a swimming pool down there on that two acres of land." They were gonna do all kinds of things, that was all bought up. The Lions Club was gonna do that, you know? Alright, well, nothing happened, they tore down a beautiful building, which could've been a beautiful town hall, matter of fact. Sleep roof, four huge rooms, alleyway down the front, what do we do? We tear it down. And we spent two thousand dollars to get it tore down. So, I'm saying, you know, I, I don't know, these programs, everybody thinks that they're gonna do something, we've, uh, tried to do something down there in, at North Pond, and we have a hard job even getting the grass mowed, see? Years ago, when I was a younger guy and played ball, we mowed the grass, the, the seniors for their beer game on Sunday, so the little league could play on it all week, which was fine, we all got along, it was something good. But now, we, you know, everything seems to be, I don't think that's an ideal spot, by any stretch of the imagination, and I've already had a neighbor tell me, "Do you think I wanna listen to bands and all that crap down here?"
I've already talked to the brothers.
Yeah, and I have, too. And, I mean, see, so I don't know, I mean, you can take these things, and, you know, something that's, uh...
If we get the grant, do we have to do it right away?
Well, hey, I don't know if we're gonna get the grant, it'll probably be two or three months before we know if we get the grant, and then we have until, I don't know, uh, probably up to a year to get it accomplished, so, no, we don't have to do it right away. I, my, my only comment is, uh, you, you hired me to try to spur an economic activity, to try to bring the town together, to try to get things moving, and I'm trying, and the, the next alternative is do nothing, and I'd be happy to do that if that's what you'd like me to do.
Yeah, this grant was available, and I can understand why you're going for it.
I do, too.
Yeah. Makes sense. My thinking, why I ask the question is, I, I'm thinking if we're building a town office here, would it disrupt, disrupt that land down there with bulldozing and digging and everything once we put it in place?
Oh, then, then the bulldozing and digging...
There's several acres here, I mean, what is the total?
Two point nine.
Two point nine.
So, it'd be far enough away.
Two point nine, okay. Question?
I just wanted to, because Ronnie, you'd said, um, events being thrown, and would people come, and there were, there was a very successful July 4th event over at the Legion Pavilion, and there was also a very successful harvest festival, um, which had quite a number of towns' people coming, so, I do think if you build it, they will come and they will participate in events here in town. I know they will.
If they promote it correctly.
And I've been, I've been calling around to local entities, I've talked to Williams College, the music department, despite their interest in coming and playing classical music in the gazebo over the summer, concerts, so...
Would we charge for them to use it, or it would be open?
I suggest no, I suggest no, it's, it, we cut the grass now, adding another little bit is gonna be negligible in terms of cost, insurance, next to nothing, I think they said maybe twenty bucks, but it's next to nothing, so, it's, the gazebo's, gazebo's a roof, columns, concrete.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? Take a motion.
The motion to, to approve the grant, is that what we're...
I thought it was a motion to waive the fees.
Waive the fees.
Waive the fees, yeah, so I was, I'm sorry.
It was, yes, and we already did, we did the motion to waive, and he seconded it, and then we did discussion, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
The next, uh, is to the adoption of the traffic ordinance, you've had two readings, respectively, plus you adopt the traffic ordinance, and you'll post it appropriately.
I haven't read it, so I'm just gonna...
Thank you all.
Take care.
Take care, Mike.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
And I'll bring this one. Someone wanna make a motion on the traffic ordinance? Maybe you can explain, is everybody up to speed on what this entails? What this means, Bob, you're familiar with it.
I have a few questions, I am, and I, but I, I haven't even read it, but is that, are we gonna post all different kinds of speed limits all over town? Is that what this is? Is that what we're...
Do we have it here?
Is this the one from Jim?
No, listen, no, it's, uh...
So, maybe you could do a brief explanation?
Actually, I'd like to defer to Linda, she wrote it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have it in our packets?
Actually, no, you've had, this is the, you've had two readings already, that's why it's not in your packet, so...
So, I haven't seen it, correct?
You know, we copy. So, Linda wrote this, she approached me, said we need to get this, get this state care of, I went to the sheriff, we went through it, and he said everything's the way I want it, uh, and she did a fantastic job at it, so, all the background is, is what she put into it.
And it also allows us to recover some of those fines that are...
We are recovering fines, but this, but, uh, this, if I read it correctly, this adds a lot of the hazardous carriers, hazardous carrier routes, uh...
Here's an extra copy.
So, we get a percent, a higher percentage of fines, back on fines that are...
Is there a deadline to approve this or anything? Can we have more time?
No, you do two, you do two readings, then you adopt, and then we post it for sixty days, conspicuous spots.
Are there any increases in the fines?
No. No increases.
The fines are, are the fines that are, are issued by the state, right?
Correct, and, and we are receiving fines. It takes quite a long time to process, but we do get them.
I don't wanna vote on it without taking time to read it.
Okay. We'll table it for another two weeks?
Sure.
Is it okay?
I'll, I'll, I'll send it out to you again, I'll make copies and leave it out to you. No problem.
Well, see, the only reason I didn't, I wanna read it also, but the only reason that I, uh, asked the question was because we had a citizen in here before, and he wanted all different kinds of speed limits and things like that, and that's very confusing, as far as I'm concerned.
I agree.
I mean, come on, you're...
That's an ordinance.
That was an ordinance, that was, unfortunately, that I was discussing at the same time.
The things I just read there were just, nothing but common sense, you know, you don't pass somebody on the right side, you don't do this, you don't do that, I mean, come on, you're, you're, if you've got a driver's license, you should know that.
Next.
Please.
Quick discussion on the hydro dam, railroad did some trimming and caused a fair amount of damage on the hydro plant property, uh, we've been working with hydro, it's our property, uh, it is to the point where, uh, the railroad came and did a, not an adequate job, unacceptable job of, of removing it and not replaced it, break, but broken fence and so forth, so, we've gone to State Transportation Department and trying to motivate the State Transportation Department to get the railroad and get them to pell to go down and fix it. I just wanted to update you on that. The next would be the 2019 transfer station fees, we talked earlier, uh, raising the price of undesigned household trash by twenty-five cents, and that's the only thing that would go up, and, yes, ma'am?
Can I ask on that? I know in the past, we checked with, with TAM on operating our landfill, and at the time, I think that we checked on it, the rates for TAM and what we're doing now were about the same. Should we revisit that?
What, what do you mean by the, you mean dump rates?
Yeah, well, not the dump rates, but it was gonna cost us the same amount for TAM to run the transfer station as it was for us to run it.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Considering have, maybe having, uh, an operation TAM or Casella or somebody take, take it over at one time, now...
We did.
We did, that's what we talked about, now, and...
Do you remember why you went against it?
Well, we decided to stay with what we had for, for the time being, for different reasons, but we were, that, that keeps, that's a liquid thing in motion there, because they keep changing the laws, you know, the state and, and everybody, and, I mean, TAM is up on the laws, or so would any other big carrier, probably, where we have to step up, and, you know, we gotta do this, we gotta do that, I guess they're taking food over there now, scraps, and...
I tell you, yeah, there's, there's a lot of different initiatives going on, but Tom is, Tom is right in your face, Tom goes to all the meetings, he, he knows exactly what he's doing.
Well, I'm not saying that we should, well, I was saying, like Sue was mentioning, well, you know, well, maybe, I don't know what it costs, either, I didn't see the budget. I don't know what it cost this past year, now, it cost us money every year for that. It cost us a lot of money, and we could get, uh, uh, do our business directly with, with TAM, whatever, how, how, we, we were planning on doing that before, they'd take it over or whatever, they were gonna supply everything, they'd just run that, it would be in that area, and they'd haul it to wherever, down here, or wherever they ship it to.
Would you consider approving these and then commission me to go and negotiate with TAM and Casella?
Well, that's, yeah, I'm, I'm all set for it, them fees, the only fee they raised was, was household trash, right?
But, is that enough to cover, cover the increase that they incurred this last year?
I think he's, he's thinking along the lines of, uh, we don't wanna overdo it, we, we don't wanna, uh, overburden the public, uh, don't wanna start, um, asking for money for, um, recycling, uh, we'd like to motivate people to recycle more. Uh, when we talk to the budget, when we speak to the budget, we'll look at some of the figures, we looked at what was raised last year, it will go up, we'll get more, but, I don't know, you know, not, not a ton, but the biggest problem we have is where to put the garbage, that's why the rates are going up, with China not taking plastics or not taking any, uh, paper anymore, Massachusetts had a bottling recycling plant that's closed down, so, even TAM and Miss Casella, everyone's trying to figure out where to put garbage, that's why it's, the trucking fees, railroad fees, everything's going up. We are trying to maintain as low a price we can to keep this place running, and TAM is doing a heck of a job at it.
But we still have, but I still continually hear people concerned about, we still have a tremendous amount of money that the, that the taxpayers are paying to keep that gr- running.
And there's only a certain percentage of the taxpayers that use it.
That's correct.
I mean, a lot of people have a dumpster, or they got TAM or Casella picking it up by their packages, and of course, we hear this stuff, so...
Just a second, just a second.
And I was just curious that is, we ought to keep researching that and seeing, I know it's a changing thing, it's changing all over the place. I mean, that's all you see, even if you get on the interweb there, that's all they're talking about, is trash, and what they do, and what they take, and...
Would you like me to re, authorize me to go into negotiations with...
I think just a simple conversation with Trevor can, he can explain, he's come into the board before and spoke about it, I mean, he reviewed it one year, we gave him all our documents, everything, and he didn't feel that there was any savings for the town in him running it at the time. We talked to Casella, I personally talked to Casella, and they said that the best thing we could do was to close it up and send everybody to Bennington, because we weren't, we weren't, our rates weren't high enough to recover the cost of running the transfer station, you know, it's just...
I'm willing to make a motion to proceed with your fees, but I'd also agree with Ronnie, and I think we should revisit it and see if there's an alternative.
Absolutely, I'll do whatever you want.
Okay.
Can we...
Just to look at it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll do whatever you want.
John?
I was just going to say that too, I think you just hit on it a little bit, if it's cost, I think, I mean, something to look at for the board, if the cost is really high on that, why not just say, "Hey, the town dump is going to be closing at this point," and that who is using it? There is a dump right here to go to, so, I mean, I take mine down to there, I take it in the back of my truck, run it down there, I don't, I haven't used a dump either. But, I mean, it's, if the cost is high on the town taxes, it's closing.
You have to understand that some of the fees we pay, we're going to pay regardless, like the solid waste, the SWP is like 16,000 or 17,000 right now, we're going to pay that regardless, but the actual above and beyond the operating cost of that transfer station, I think is in excess of, well in excess of $70,000 or $80,000 a year.
Yeah, yeah, it's up around.
And that's what we're paying, right?
That's what, that's what we're, that's what we have to contribute towards to keep it running, on top of the fees that are collected.
Right, and then the, and the other side of it is, if the fees go up, then you're, then we have to pay more in illegal dumping, as soon as those fees go up.
Yeah, I don't know.
And I don't know, I don't know what that matter is.
I've heard that discussion before, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's true or not.
The rationale for increasing garbage fees is to motivate people to segregate and recycle more. Of course, that...
But that's...
Well, you're right, yeah.
And then no one's taking plastic, so it's harder to...
Correct, all the above.
Yep. Were these the fees that TAM published, is that what this is?
No, this is, this is Tom's.
You have to understand too, that we're, we are heavily mandated by the state on everything we do there, and what we can do with it, and what we can't, and how we handle it.
And when, when would the new fees go into effect?
Next fiscal year.
Next July?
Yeah, yes ma'am.
July 1st.
July 1st.
So we have a mo, we have a motion, you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Clarification, sir, you want me to approve this, and you want me to go out and start looking at it?
I think it's open for discussion, I think it'd be worthwhile to talk to Trevor about it, and maybe he can reiterate.
They'd like you to research it a little bit.
I'll be doing, absolutely.
Yeah, research it, and we'll talk about it again.
Absolutely. And next would be, we have some appointments. First, I would like to recommend Mr. John Bushy be appointed to the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Bushy, would you like to introduce yourself, and, I mean, you've done this before, but...
John Bushy, and I'm definitely interested, I went to the board last night, and I think I can help out based on, again, I try to run businesses around here, got one in town again, in Bennington, and I, you know, trying to bring a different perspective to the board, and help with trying to build the town and help get businesses back into this town and making, so we can get jobs going and flowing.
You have a business in town now?
I got, I got one at my house, actually two, I've started there at my house, and then I got one in Bennington.
Is that Eddie Ray's, this place in Bennington?
Yes.
Not anymore.
Yes.
Did you buy that from him, I'm sorry?
I'm renting it right now, option purchase.
And is John the only candidate for the position?
Yes, he is.
Okay. And how many people do we have on that board?
Four, we'll have five now.
And that's what you wanted with the board?
Very good.
I make a motion, we nominate him.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations.
Good job.
The second would be, again, Mr. Bushy and Rose Marie Pelletier for the position on the planning board, those are your two candidates.
So if we put John on the economic, why don't we put Rose Marie on the planning board?
Well, I know John has showed interest in the planning commission before, and I think he would be a good addition. I don't know why you couldn't do both.
It's, in terms of whether he's capable of doing it, that would be up to him, that's all, that's just mine.
Did you want both? Did you want to be on both, is that...
Oh, yes.
You didn't?
Yeah. I applied for both.
I would, I'd make a motion that we approve John on the planning commission.
I make a motion, we approve Rose Marie.
Well, I'm going to second Bob's motion.
Okay. So, a motion and a second.
You don't have a second on mine, so you've got to call the vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
John, you're on the planning commission also.
Thank you.
Okay. Policies, the next one is consideration of the workers' compensation policy. We have met, and we were used in Southern Vermont Medical Center, has occupational health, had several meetings with them, and this is, I believe, the second time you've seen this, obviously you haven't. It helps us. If someone gets, if someone gets injured, we want to stay within workers' compensation laws, we want to make sure that they're treated properly, that they return to work, and they're hat, they're safe. And also, the second policy to this would be the transfer of workers to, transition workers back to, back to work, but this is the workers' compensation policy.
Is this a policy that we've had in the past, or is this a new policy?
It's a new policy, we didn't have it, no.
We never had a policy?
Not that I know of. So what, as a town, from a human resources standpoint, we have, we have employees, employee gets hurt, we want to make sure the employee is treated properly and comes back to work, and we want to keep track of what happened, and we want to make sure it doesn't happen again. In addition, our insurance looks at this from a heavy-handed standpoint, if somebody gets hurt, we pay more, so having these policies in place and using them with a safety plan and transitioning people back to work, doing safety inspections, this whole encompassing part of human resources is very important, that we, number one, take care of our employees, and number two, we don't put ourselves in jeopardy by not following policies, practices, and state law.
And this goes by Vermont law or federal law?
It's both.
There's also some savings, there's some financial savings.
Well, some savings, and then all of a sudden, there's a couple things that get added onto the insurance.
Get work.
I couldn't help, so...
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The signatures. And the next one is, the big one, is the health and safety plan. This is, on all policies, I ask that you look at them carefully, read through them. Includes building safety checks, vehicle safety checks, that we'll maintain on file, fire safety checklists, and starting in January, we'll be doing the emergency action plan, redoing the emergency action plan, training our employees that use CPR, and things like fire extinguisher use, active shooter policies and so forth. Pretty extensive.
Let's develop sort of a plan.
So that would be the town's safety plan.
Motion on that?
I haven't really seen the safety plan. And again, this is standard, Michael, with...
It's standard, but we wrote it with due regard for our, our town and our resources. Find the other one, transfer to work.
Well, I think it's important to have a safety plan in place, and if it's standard, I'm okay with it.
I'm good with it. So, I guess it would...
We needed a motion for that one also.
Yeah, nice way to say that, it's a motion. I motion that we approve the health and safety plan.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
The next one, I wrote, based on past experiences that we had, drafted a Vermont Public Record Inspection Copying and Transmission Policy to the town. So we have a distinct method for public record request forms and policies for inspection of public records. We have had in the past couple of months...
Policies for who to inspect?
Anyone.
Anybody to inspect our public records?
Correct. Identify what's, what can be looked at, when it can be looked at, how it's to be collected, how it's to be disseminated, what items are taken out for privacy purposes. And not to have to call the lawyer every time someone wants, you know, wants a document, codify it, policy, just go look at the policy.
And we've never had a policy like that before either?
No, not to my knowledge.
We have a retention policy from 2012. And what, I don't understand what that means, the retention records.
How long do you keep records?
How long do you keep records?
Oh, okay, retention.
So I did...
Based on the state.
I think you first sent this out about a month or so ago, right?
Correct.
I compared it to the VLCT's recommended policy, and I didn't find any change, any real differences, so I'm perfectly okay with it, it's what the VLCT recommends.
So you're asking us if we want you to write a policy on this, is that what you're asking?
I wrote the policy.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, this is the policy right here.
Oh, sorry.
What I urge you, if you need to read it, read it, I don't want to push a policy past you that...
All right, there's no hurry on this.
No hurry whatsoever.
Okay, so we can table this one too.
Go out to the VLCT and bring down errors, and I just give a word comparison.
So just, so the traffic ordinance and this one here, we're going to table for our next meeting.
Well, this Vermont Public Records, this is already a law, isn't it?
The law for, the law for, compelling you to have to give it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it compels you to have to give it, but the policy and the procedure is kept with the town, because not all towns keep records the same.
So is there anything that you put in specifically for us? Did you, is there anything that you put specific to poundal, or...
Not necessarily, but it covers everything that we do. Because we had to go through dumping the rack storage, there's still piles of paper stacked up in places where we make copies. That way, we know exactly what we're, tell the public when they're asking for this, what their expectation is, and...
I'm sorry, Ronnie, I interrupted you.
Well, I was, I'm certain that there has to be a law that the state has written up, that you've got so much time to produce a record if somebody wants it.
That's accurate.
Yep.
That's the point I'm looking at, this, this isn't, we're not breaking the law here, by saying, well, you ain't got to, the person don't work that day, or whatever.
Well, a prime example.
I want us to comply with the Vermont state law on records, we've had people holler about records here before, quite a few of them, and it, and we've turned out to have some real disputes, and they weren't nice ones, they were nasty.
That's why I wanted it codified, that's why I codified it, and I'll give you a prime example, that's why I wanted it codified, so we have a policy, so we follow the policy, the public knows what the policy is when they come in. We had someone ask for emails, gave every email that individual asked for, right, within the 72 hours, then the individual came back and said, "But that's not what I wanted," clarified and narrowed the search, so does the clock start again, or is the clock still going? Those are the kind of things that we take care of in the policy.
Yeah, well, for past things like Ronnie said, and like you said, we do need to have a policy.
We just ran into these glitches, and we want to make sure, hey, here's the policy, ma'am, sir, take a read.
I appreciate you doing all these policies, Michael, and helping protect us.
Protecting me too, I got a little self-interest. But take your time, read it.
We'll table that to our next one.
Okay.
Okay.
The next one would be Transitional Return to Work Program. Essentially, this is, I consider this kind of an annex to workers' compensation, it, so if we have someone, say, from a highway, and they get injured, and the doctor says that, you know, this person can come back to work with light duty, and we have a ton of papers to file, we can use that employee, they can come back to work, and there's a lot of reasons why they want to get folks back to work and moving around within the limits of what they can do physically. Again, just read it, you know, go through it. It has an accompanying state and local forms, forms on the Occupational Health Center.
So this would be different than a worker's comp policy, so say, somebody goes out on workman's comp, and then you want to bring them back to work at a lighter duty or something?
So, doctor says, that somebody gets injured, they go, and the doctor says, "You can go back to work, but I don't want you living over 50 pounds." They come back to, if we, if we have work for them to do that's within those guidelines, we can have them come back to work within the limitations of that, rather than them not being here.
Okay.
All right, so it stops the workers' comp clock, and then they have to go back and visit. Now, this clinic, they come back and they're clear to go back to work, he wants them back in a month to see them again, to make sure that they're still on track.
So they go to occupational health?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so take your time and read that.
Okay.
And the next is, you approved the contract with Mr. D'Amozio on 8.5 acres of land to buying gravel, and looking at the law, we have to place a ballot article. Shall the voters approve the acquisition of 8.5 acres of land located at 197 Maple Grove Road, parcel number, span number, for the purpose of the town gravel pit, at a cost of $200,000? Set capital acquisition to be financed for a term of five years or less by intra-municipal loan, using existing highway funds. We were, this is what the funds were for in the budget, was to pay for the land that we were going to buy previously from Mr. Strowmeyer, and that didn't come through, so that's what that money's for, so we get a five-year loan, technically a revenue anticipation note, and we pay that back, so there's no tax increase, it's a wash, but we, we're buying property, we're buying real property, so we have to put that ballot article in. I don't think you have to move...
So the town has to vote on that, so you're asking for approval of the ballot article?
Right.
That's just an article area.
And I would suggest too, that when the, when that time comes, that we have, do a little education on it, and let people understand, let them know what our resources are, what we have right now, what we don't have, and what, you know, potentially what we're saving, then...
I mean, we could explain to them that we're not going into debt for this, because we're getting material, and it's going to pay for itself, and it's the long-term, long way out.
Sure.
This isn't just a five-year thing, it'll last a long time.
Right.
Right.
So it's us to...
I agree, I think it's something we have somehow or another, I'm not sure how to do it, Ronnie, but we need to somehow or another provide some information there for people to, because a lot of people don't understand it, you know?
And I want to emphasize that our highway foreman has done a magnificent job tracking this down, magnificent job working with the, working with the, all the parties on this, really happy with him.
When I was on the board before, we were looking at the Strowmeyer property, and then that fell through, so, and I know how urgent it was to find some gravel.
Right. The next would be to begin review of the budget.
This would be the first review, right?
Yes, ma'am.
John, did you have something you wanted to bring before the board?
No.
No? Okay. Good to see you. So is this something we go into executive session to discuss, or do we discuss this on the air, or what is it, what's the plan?
I don't see any reason to go into executive session.
I'm just asking.
I just, I just don't see any reason, it could, I guess, if you wanted to, I don't see a reason.
No, it's up to you guys, I'm just asking. Doesn't qualify for...
No, it doesn't.
There you are, I said there was no reason.
So we're going to go over this tonight? So we're gonna go over this tonight, and-
We'll eliminate you.
Discuss different things, and then we're gonna go over it again.
We'll adjust it, we'll come back, make further recommendations, and at whatever point you feel comfortable, you can vote for adoption.
And what's the deadline to have it finished by?
We need to be, we need to be all done in February, and posted by February 3rd.
Okay, because we have how many more meetings? We have another meeting this month? On the 29th?
What this reflects is a great deal of hard work on part of our staff. The idea was to start early, start looking at historical trends on how much we spend, how much we plan to spend in the future, to go out and get prices on, on things, get alternate prices, you get the best deal. Looking at the general fund, we had this down to a 3.41 increase over last year's budget. My goal was 3%. With the library adding 15,000 to their ballot, that brings us to 4.1% over, and 2.4% of this entire budget is ballot articles. You've all read this, I take it.
I'm sorry, how much did you say was ballot articles?
2.4% is on ballot articles.
Do you mean 2.4% of the increase?
Of the increase.
Increase, yeah.
Not, not of the budget. It's considerably more of the budget.
Yeah, oh, very, yeah, budget would be very much.
I think he wrote that here for you.
Ah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, right here, yeah.
And on that, however you want to go through this, if you want to go look at the items that you might have made notes on.
I say this, I like the way you've laid this out, it makes it much easier to understand. One of the things I do want to point out is that I think, if I'm correct, and I believe I am, last year we had the biggest budget increase, to the point that I think Nelson was surprised it passed. If we've ever been in a position to hold flat, or even reduce a little bit, we'll never have another opportunity. If the goal is 3%, and we end up at 4, but even if, if the goal is 3%, we need to project that out. What does that look like a generation from now? What does that look like two generations from now? And is that really sustainable? We really got to find areas to cut. I know that's a tall order, and I'm glad I'm not sitting on that side of the table.
It's what it is, you know?
But, but we really have to find areas that we can, we can retract a little if we can, because that's a-
I agree with you, Bob. I agree that we need to find some areas to retract.
Well, you know, we, 0.41 over 3%, while it's not 3%, Mr. Mark.
But, but even an increase. I mean, just take 3%. Let's say we were able to stick to that, and then we have a 3%, and let's say that's our goal every year, project that out over a generation, and that's the very definition of unsustainable. We can't do it. We just can't keep growing at that rapid of a pace. I think we really need to take a look at what we're actually doing, and maybe do a little less.
Well, what, I don't disagree with that. What I've been trying to do, and will continue to try to do, to bring in businesses to offset these taxes. So that we start bringing, you're right, you can't sustain that. So you either cut, or you bring in more revenue. That's, you have two options. And at this point, if you look, this is not an extravagant budget by any stretch. We're replacing things that really need to be replaced. We took a hard look at things.
Then I would need to understand what, what drove the big budget increase from last year. That was a huge increase.
I defer to you.
And he's not gonna know.
So it actually wasn't a big budget increase, it was a contribution towards taxes was large last year, because we didn't, we didn't have anything to roll over from the previous year, where we had in the past. So the actual increase in our budget was not, I don't remember the exact number, but it was a-
Plus, we added last year for the town administrator position to salary.
But also-
But the town votes on the budget, right?
Yes.
They don't vote on, they don't vote on tax increases. We are bound by law to set tax rates to achieve our budget. So, and so if you're looking at the long-term sustainability, and I agree, I agree with Michael's statement that we need to bring in businesses, but a large part of what's hurting Vermont, and I would assume poundle as well, is the cost of doing business. It's the cost of, and it's the disposable income in our, disposable income in our, in our residents' pocket. The less disposable income they have because of a higher budget, the more that's gonna hurt small businesses and other things that are trying to start up. It's gonna lower demand for anything. People can't afford to, to spend money. So that, I think, I think we grow the, I think we grow the tax base, then we increase our spending, not set our spending level with the anticipation of growing our tax base. That's, just fundamentally, that's how I would think about it.
Don't disagree. What I will show you, though, if you look, 2008 actual, well, you were, you were under, but we're over at a million 295 now. That's what the budget is. We have contingency files, but what I've been doing is, I assign all the receipts. I go into the ledger, and I look and make sure they're coded correctly. I want everything taken out of the correct line item. I want to know that if we're, over time, we, I'll tell you something I've done in the past. I have two vehicles, one's older than the other, but the newer one is a mechanic's nightmare, it's breaking down all the time. I have the data for that. I'm replacing this one over the one that's even older. That's kind of thing we want to do.
Right, and that, and that makes perfect sense, but that should be, over time, that's a consistent cost, right? So over time, that's a consistent, it's not an increase. It's, it's, at some point, you know, you have to replace, you have to repair, you have to, and you have to keep that going. So when you look that out over a generation, or two generations, then that capital investment, all of the things being equal, is, it should be a constant, right? We're putting money aside for new equipment as it, as we reach end of life. We're depreciating it over, over, over its lifespan, and, you know, that all works out. We have to be doing a lot more than we've been doing, say, 20 years ago. Now, and I'm speaking out of ignorance here, too. I'm assuming that we did a lot less 20 years ago, and I think that's true. I think our, from what I know from paying taxes, I know I paid more every year, and I know that it hurts. So, and I'm sure that's true for our citizens. And you've done really outstanding work with this, and I want to make that clear. And it's a lot easier to sit on this side of the table and say, cut, 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 than it is to actually do the cutting.
But it's our job to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Need you to set that policy with me, so we go through, and you say, you know, we don't want to do that, and we can cut that. We do want to do this, we want to add to it. Highway, you gotta have some kind of policy to start doing, we have close to $400,000 worth of culvert repairs that has to be done at some point. What's the policy? How do we want us to attain that? Just go out, get a bond for $400,000 and knock it out? We've been trying grants. Our highway foreman's amazing, he's brought a lot of money with grants.
Maybe.
So going through this, my expectation of you folks is to go through, and okay, you're satisfied, or you're not satisfied. Ask questions, can we get by without X, Y, or Z, and we'll do what you ask, bottom line, with the budget where you set it. And then we'll live with it, we'll live within that. That's what our job is.
I know this doesn't qualify for executive session, but there's some personnel figures here that I think should qualify for executive session.
I think those things were discussed in executive session when they were approved.
These on here were all approved?
No.
This is in addition to the ones we already approved.
Yeah.
All right. I did not know that. So, okay. I thought, I thought this was reflecting what we had already talked about.
No.
No. Okay.
No. So I'd like to request that, at some point, it doesn't have to be tonight, that the, those particular items, we have a discussion on in executive session.
That's up to you. Having looked at this, where do you folks want to trim? Do you want to add?
I do have a question on the health insurance on the town clerk. I thought we had a ballot article about the town clerk being an elected position and not a appointed position, and she would not have health insurance. And I thought we could vote on that. We tried to pass it so that she would be a town employee, and she could have the insurance. And it was voted down, and at the time, I believe she didn't want it.
I'd have to, I'd have to take your word for that.
So I do have a question on that, and that's $6,300.
I thought it was just whether or not the position was elected or appointed. I didn't think it was-
Well, the difference between elected and appointed was, appointed, she would get insurance, elected, she would not get insurance.
I just don't recall that being part of this guy.
But the law states is that we have a personnel policy. They're offered to be in the personnel policy, they sign a piece of paper, then they can get health insurance. No one, no one opted for that, except Helen, I think.
I think we signed that, too, as a board member. We signed that, we signed that.
Then elected officials would not get it.
I can't, I don't know what was in her mind at that time, that it was offered to everybody. And I don't know whether you want to go forward and say, next fiscal year, if she wants to sign that, and she wants to come onto the health insurance, that's up to you. But that means that, that as a town clerk, even elected, she has to abide by the personnel policy.
Right.
Right.
I understand that's been other meetings that she has said that she is not, she is an elected official, and even handing in payments and stuff, she's going to do it her way, and not the way we want her to do it. So I think if she wants to be independent, as she can be, she's totally allowed to do that. I don't think we should give her the health insurance.
I don't think her, the way she's handling the funds has anything to do with this, but-
No, but it does, according to her, the difference between the way she handles the funds and the way she doesn't handle the funds was elected or not elected at all.
That's true. I just don't think it has any relevancy to the health insurance.
No, but I'm saying she's, she's an elected position, so it should be treated as an elected position. And elected people do not have health insurance.
Yeah, I guess I'm ignorant on that. I'll have to check on it.
That's an elected official.
But didn't they make that?
I'm just telling you.
Yeah, that was a policy made in the past.
The former town clerk had health insurance, too.
And there, wasn't there a, from my understanding-
So I'm just telling you that we've made exceptions.
I know, I know you've made exceptions.
So let's, I mean, I-
But I think we should check the policy on it, because-
I'm more interested in-
From what I, from what I understood was, at the time those two were given the health insurance, that it was not to happen anymore after that. I don't know. Somebody will have to check, do some research on it and check into it.
If we're gonna get into what we need to cut, I think that's gonna, whether we cut that or not, I don't think it's gonna make a drop in the bucket on the 4.1% or 3%, or the 3%.
No, but as you're, as you're saying, as you're saying, we need to cut.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we're gonna have to make some sharp cuts.
Some hard decisions.
Yeah. So that is one of them, and we're just starting on the list. That's not going to be the only one. There's, there's many on here, I think.
Yep.
Well, I've sat through these budget things before, and we used to do, we used to go line by line. That's the way it was. And, you know, and also, we'd have people in here. We talked to the listeners, talked to the transfer station guy, talked to the road boss, the road yard.
That's what I did.
But that's what Michael's doing now.
We're gonna, we're gonna decide whether or not, how we're gonna do this, you know? I mean, if I ain't got, if I'm, if I'm not including and deciding anything, why should I even talk about it? I figured that, you know, selectmen are the ones that are supposed to be laying out these, what you're gonna pay, how much you're gonna spend. I understand, Michael, I'm not being disrespectful or anything. But my understanding was, when we got decided for a town administrator, a town administrator would help us to find out where we could get money and things like that, and guide us with information. We don't have time for information. He has a full-time job, she has a full-time job, you know? This guy, he's, he's out of town most of the time. So, I mean, and, and my brain ain't big enough to be spending all day up here working on this.
That's why I put them all in a room, and we went over what they need, cost of what they need, and put it down, and then gave you an explanation.
All right, that's, that's all fine and dandy, but I got it.
If you want to go line for line, we can go line by line. That's funny, but it-
Well, I suggested when we first started, Ronnie, I guess he gave us some suggestions here, but that we still needed to go line by line.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the thing about it is, some, some people are gonna, are gonna speak up and say, hey, look, you know what? And sometimes you talk to the person, the individual involved, say, hey, wait a minute. And you, oh, well, we don't need all this in the building thing. We ain't building nothing. We got $50,000 in there or something, you know? We don't need to add more money, you know? We don't need to just keep, what I'm trying to say is, I think that's what Bob tried to say, was, we gotta try to get this thing under control. If we keep going, we'll be just like, I'll be like Kosis. I'll show up at the town meeting, and I'll be screaming at the top of my lungs, saying, hey, come on, we can't afford this to go up this much every year.
Respectfully, I sat with them, I sat with them and went through this entire budget. And we just, line by line, and justified, talked about increases in cost, what they have, there's reductions, too. There's reductions, so.
I saw those, too.
Yeah.
If I could just chime in a little bit, I think, I think what might be missing in the process, and, and not a criticism, this is an exceptional amount of work and a lot of coordination. And it's, and again, it's a lot easier to sit over here and say, and, and, you know, and make the comments that we're, that we're making than it is to do this. This was a, this was a lot of work from you and all the town.
Forgive me, but that was my impression of what you hired me for, and then-
Right, if I, no, I, I, I get that, and that's, and that's true. I think from a process, what we probably, and that's just another job for you, I guess, another process on the budget, but some of the things that I'd like to see in the process is maybe to kick that off. We should decide as a select board what our goal is. Our overall goal is flat, keep it under 3%, drop it 5%, whatever. We should, we should be giving you that direction before you start the process.
I think that was asked of us, and we never did.
Yeah, I, I gave you a document asking, I said that I would keep the budget at 3%. And I, memory disturbs you. I gave a timeline for the budget, and they put hard at 3%.
And, and we're kind of bound by the open meeting law. We can't really just send him individually. We have to do that as a board and vote on it. So really, what we're gonna need is a real process to say, what is our overall goals? Now, let's vote on that as a board, and say, these are the goals we would like you to get. Maybe it's not a vote, maybe it's just a direction. But, but then with that direction, start the process, and that's, that's kind of not where we went. So, so now we're reacting to the budget as it's put out, and we're looking at a 3.4 to 4.1% increase, and, and probably not what we wanted, and maybe not what the town expected. So, and that's not a criticism of you, Michael. This is an exceptional amount of work, you know?
Do whatever you folks want. That's why I'm here.
Okay.
I, I just, I'm confused on something you said with the open meeting law. You, you can, we can look at this, and we can email you any questions or changes we have, and that's not a violation of the open meeting. Unless we discuss it amongst ourselves by email, that's a violation.
That's correct.
Okay.
But, but then when you get, and I, I understand that, so we can ask questions about it. But what I can't do is say, hey, you know, Michael, I really, even, even just me and him, I can't just say, you know what I'd like to see is a, is a 5% reduction, or a 2% reduction, or hold flat. That's up to the board to decide.
Right, right.
So I can't, I can't give that instruction, because he doesn't work for me, he works for all of us.
All right, I understand now.
And so that's what I think we need to put into our process, to make sure that we're giving you a proper direction and the proper goals before the, before the process starts. And Michael, to your credit, you asked us for that, we can give it to you. So-
My assumption was that you approved that, that list of what I gave to you.
The list didn't show an increase, right?
It showed 3%.
It did.
Bottom line of 3%. That was my target.
And, and I remember looking at it thinking, well, I'll, I'll say the stuff I'm saying now the next time we talk about it in a, in a, in a meeting, and we didn't talk about it again in a meeting. So one of the things I, and I do want to get that on the agenda, too, was the, I really think we ought to go back to weekly meetings, especially now that we're in budget time. But that's another proposal that we'll do later in this meeting. So I think the infrequency of the meetings, and then, is, is kind of hurting us, and it's also kind of hurting you for getting feedback from us. I, you know, I would rather have more frequent meetings, shorter- Um, I, I, you know, I would rather have, uh, more frequent meetings, shorter. We don't have a stack of warrants like that. And then, uh, and then also be more up to date on, on the direction we're going and give better direction ourselves. And I think that helps you. I think it helps us. And I think it, uh, and I think it helps the citizens. You know, they, they voted for us. They didn't, uh, you know, we shouldn't be relinquishing that responsibility. And it seems to me that going to less frequent meetings did that. Or had the, it wasn't the intent, but that, I think that's how it played out.
I think that there's different ways of looking at it. I think we got a lot of our tasks out of the, or, or, tasks is a good word. We got a lot of our projects out of the way where we didn't have to be every week. The pressing issue is where the budget, you know what I mean? Normally, we have extra meetings when we do have a budget. But again, this year, we're doing it differently and.
I'm gonna agree with Bob basically because I, I think Ronnie would even agree. If we're gonna go through this line by line, we're gonna have to have more meetings for the budget. I'm not saying year-round or anything else, but to get this budget done and get it done on time and, and discuss the cuts or, or additions or anything we want to make, I would suggest that we have a couple of extra meetings.
I think that's, uh, I think that makes sense. And even when we said we were gonna go to every other week, it was, it was said that.
That was for our regular meetings, but special meetings we can still have. We could call a special meeting for a week from tonight.
Yeah.
Well, I think, uh, I, I think if we're going into this process, we ought to just make them regular meetings. That's my, that's my opinion. We ought to just go back to what we were, which was weekly. And I think there's enough work ahead of us that we should ought to be doing that.
I'm okay with a special meeting just to do budget.
I'm, I'm okay with that too.
But just take a long time. And, and I hate to see us dragged through a big, long meeting and then get into the budget because we're, we're exhausted. We're too tired to.
It's already almost nine o'clock.
Right, right. So, I would prefer a special meeting just to do budget.
I agree with that.
We want to shoot for next Thursday night?
We, we, well, that's right, we don't have a meeting.
Oh, you're out of town, okay.
I'm out of town.
Any other day next week? Friday?
Friday.
Friday, that's often for me, yeah.
Saturday?
Friday's a hard one for me.
I'm not available for the next two weeks.
Can all meet at the Roost.
That's right, it's not open anymore.
Want to have a beer while we go through budget? Sure. Okay, approve, approve.
That's a good budget. We could.
What's our time frame at the meeting here?
She said the end of January. Couldn't we do the first week in January?
Well, you have New Year's is what, Tuesday?
It's Tuesday. So, Thursday should be all right, right?
Thursday, okay.
Do we have scheduled meeting for that Thursday?
No.
Uh, yeah.
So, second, second and fourth.
Oh, all right, that's good.
So, what would it be, July 5th?
Yep.
Or January 5th, July? Yay, summer.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
I don't mind.
You don't mind?
Don't mind.
What's the board's approach? Do you want to go, do as we did in the past? Have the transfer station guy in, the road department and go through line by line that, their portion of the budget so that if you have questions, you can understand? Or do you want to take what you have right?
Get the input of the people that are trying to run the show.
But that's what Michael has already done with them, but if you want to talk.
We have, we have already done this. However, I was kind of hoping when we sat down and we did all this work that the board would look over what we've presented and have your questions on any particular line item, what, you know, if you agreed, disagreed, or if there was a question or whatever, to just shorten up the process because we've already worked.
Several.
Several meetings we've had. We've, we've done a lot of work to bring it this far. Now, we just need, we need to address the board's questions. So, if, you know, if you want to have the road foreman here, if you want to have the transfer station, if you want to have other individuals that you have questions for, speak up so we can schedule. I guess that's what I'm saying. We can't schedule if we don't know what you're doing or want to do.
I don't feel I need. I don't feel I need them.
Are you in agreement?
I'll do whatever they want. Do whatever they'd like to do.
It's up to you guys. I'm, I'm okay with, with Michael.
I, I am also. But I also respect, um, Ronnie and, um, and Bob's ideas going line for line. I mean, I think, in my work, that's what, um, that's, that is the practice there also, I found out today. Especially if there's an increase.
Well, it keeps bumping up. I mean, I don't know how much longer the, I mean, all right, we had a, you know, a couple of new houses built, I guess. New garage went up. Well, it's gonna be off a high for, off a high for a couple of houses and that garage. So, you pay this increase, I'll tell you that. And the other people, I know a lot of people can hardly make it. It's a, you know, it's a, and I, and I think it's a, it's a little bit extravagant in some of them areas. And it's just like, you know, I mean, like they were talking about a librarian. Did anybody advertise for one? You know what I mean? And they automatically, you know, throw out that money? You know, we pay this, we give sell them and write money every year.
Is it just a level fund or a level fund?
On the thing, you know what I mean? I mean, and then, and look, they, well, all I'm saying is, is, uh, I know they got a ton of money from the resident too. I mean, how about they spend a little of that money or whatever? It's like, it's like.
That's the choice to the voters.
That's up to the voters. Say, I, I have no control. They, they put a ballot article in.
Yeah, they got a petition, Ronnie.
They, they put a petition and they, they put that in. I can't control that.
They haven't done it yet, but I, I anticipate they're coming forward with a petition.
Well, they took out a petition the day I was here a couple of weeks ago to put it on the ballot.
They have until January 17th.
So, it sounds like, it sounds like we, we have, um, you know, inclination to level fund by hearing people here tonight. I think.
I need to.
That's the feeling that we have. And I think we need to go back and work at it.
I just cut.
See what you can do.
Absolutely.
Well, I think that's, to me, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with taking Michael's recommendations on it, but now, now what he's got, which he didn't have from us before, is, is direction.
That's right.
Right.
So, um, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. If you think you can get it even, that would be awesome.
I don't have other choice.
I would love to go back to the town and say, look, we.
I'll do it. I'll do whatever you want.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, I, I realize it. Cost of living and everything else goes up every year, but, uh, that's, that's a pretty big jump. 4%.
And again, 2% of that is nothing to do with me.
Right, ballot art.
Ballot art. I have no control over that.
We need the town's help in trying to control the budget. Start voting stuff down.
But they don't. They vote them all in every time. They always pass.
Well, that's, that's their will.
But then they don't understand why the taxes went up.
Yeah, well, exactly. That's exactly it.
There maybe needs to be more voter education.
I agree.
Well, one of the things, everything we.
There is, there, there are so many, many voters who, they don't equate the ballot articles how it affects the overall tax situation.
Right.
They don't.
One thing I'd like to see on, on the ballot article, if we ever get to talking about that, is that when we're voting for a budget, I think we ought to put right on the ballot article of the five-year rolling history. It could be at adjusted dollars, um, you know, and just say what the adjusted dollars are. I think it's, would normally be in, I would, I would suggest current dollars. So, if we're voting in 2019 in March on the next budget, in $20,000 adjusted, here's the last five with a percent increase for each one of them, and now this is what you're voting on. I, I think, I think that the public deserves to see how much we're increasing year over year because that's what makes it sustainable. And that's what puts it into context for somebody going in and casting that ballot. And I think if we're, and if, I think if we do that, it also puts a lot of pressure on us to make sure that we put out something that's palatable and sustainable. I can't stress that sustainable enough. If we're going up 3% to 4% a year, that's not sustainable. That's gonna, that's going to make this an unlivable place in one generation.
And see, I was sleeping when Jason was reading them warrants, I guess, because I meant to have him put the figures down for them schools. That's such a nice amount of money that we, you know, and nobody says nothing. Them budgets pass right through. I mean, people, they, you know, what are we getting? And now, we're up, you know, a little town like this, I mean, come on, I think you, you know, uh, we're, we're charging a lot, a lot of money to, to live here. And, and actually, we're short on some things. Some things we should have a little bit better. A little bit better. But anyway.
Can I ask a question on the ballot article? You might not know it, Michael, but I think Linda does. Is it, I think it was my understanding that once they put a ballot article, I hate to pick on anybody, but say it's, all right, let's say it's the fire department. They have a ballot article that goes on. If they want it on again next year, do they have to do a petition again?
Yeah.
The only, the nonprofits only repetition if they ask, request for more money than was voted by the previous vote. That's the board's policy.
They don't ask for more money, you don't have to repetition if you're a nonprofit.
Well, wait a minute, does that mean they get the same amount of money every year?
Mm-hmm.
If they ask for it.
If they ask for it.
If they ask for it.
The town says yes. I mean, if you got a.
No, but my point is.
Pownell has not adopted a policy where, um, that, that any nonprofit has to repetition the town after, like, say, two years or three years of being on the ballot. Their only policy that Pownell has in place is any increase over the previous voted. They have to go out and repetition. That's it. Bennington has looked at different ways. We have not.
And they do it the same way we do it?
No, they don't.
What does Shasfer do, do we know?
Shasfer, I don't know. I've never, I've never looked into Shasfer.
I know they all pass, and I'm not saying they shouldn't pass, but 2.4% of.
The increase.
So, the increase is ballot art.
It's ballot articles.
You know, we're level funded. We're level funded.
We're level funded and increases.
We gotta do roads, we gotta pay our people. The insurance went up. I, I told you the insurance, that went up.
That's what I say, some of that stuff, we have no control over.
That's the difficult thing. And I think some of those costs are only gonna increase in the next couple of years.
Right now, that, this budget reflects the anticipation of a $15,000 increase in the ballot article right now.
For the librarian?
Yes.
Right.
It reflects it.
Yep.
Which.
But it also reflects.
Will come to us year after year after year if they.
Potentially.
It also reflects the, the timber fund money.
$20,000, yeah.
The timber fund money would have to go back into.
So, there, we, we looked at every line. We decided that.
The timber fund money hasn't gone anywhere yet.
That's right.
Hasn't gone anywhere, no.
Potentially it would.
Potentially. And we looked at, we went through each line. I asked, do you need this? What are you doing? What are you not doing? You need a new truck? You don't need a new truck? And you keep it for, for another year? All through, each line by line, and they gave their honest assessment. And then I cut it. I already did a cut. After they gave me their assessment, I went through and cut. To get down to 3.41%. So, because I, I told you I would be at 3. So, you know, the, the level funding's gonna be easy. Just gonna.
The timber fund money, you, you have suggested that if we don't get the grant, that be used for the, the park.
That, that was the suggestion. If you want to roll it back.
But if we roll that back in, that will offset.
The $15,000.
Wind up spending all that timber fund money for a lawnmower guy.
That's the other thing.
That's the other, we got, we got, our lawnmower guys no more. We got, we got bids out for the lawn. That's gonna, that's gonna.
You know that's gonna be an increase.
Why Jared Lewis, he's, he's not gonna do it anymore?
He said he's retiring.
Couldn't do it anymore.
He's like 13, right?
He can't do it anymore for what? He's been charging the town.
Oh.
No way.
He can't.
I gotta get my son out here.
He's gone so wild.
There's a lot, there's a lot of, I mean, that's a big job. That's two or three days' work a week.
Oh, yeah, easily.
Full-time, I mean, there's a lot of mowing, a lot of.
Them cemeteries are very time consuming.
Yes.
Very time consuming.
So, I, that's an outlier. I don't know what's gonna happen there.
The timber fund could be moved to another fund in the general budget.
Wherever you want it.
To offset taxes.